Please Director.
Matthew Christo.
Crystal, please, Director.
Eva Clinsman, Director.
Tom Odine, Kirk. Kirk Castle, Vice President. Crystal, your Superintendent. We'd also like to welcome Eva Bahn, who is our District Secretary, and Julie Wertz, who is our District Bookkeeper. Eva Frobe, sorry. So it happens when you're here together for a little long time.
As we move forward in our annual meeting, I do just want to talk about a couple of ground rules. During public comment, to address the Chair, please come up and use the microphone, state your name and place of residency. Please be brief, no longer than ten minutes. One person may speak no more than twice on a given subject. Equal time will be given to both sides of an issue. To add, there has to be a motion that is made, discussed, take discussions then take place if needed, and then a vote is taken. To vote, votes, boys, votes are taken unless the situation warrants the use of another method. Written ballot is used for the tax levying. Any questions on those ground rules? I would move then for the election of a Chairperson. Could somebody elect a Chairperson? Motion accepted. Second, a motion by Thomas, second by Kirk. All those favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Appoint a clerk. I would move to appoint Eva Frobe. Second, all those favor. And then we need to appoint a Parliamentarian. David makes the motion to approve Bob Meyer, and a second by Matt. All those favor. Carries. Public comment. None at this time. Moving forward, we will look to approve the minutes of the 2024 Annual Meeting. Will Eva be reading those? There were handouts in the back. I don't know.
Annual Meeting, Lord, Loyal Board of Education, Monday, October 21st, 2024. The meeting was called to order by Board President Rayo at 7:33 PM. Board members present were Dennis Rayo, Tom Odine, Kirk Castle, David Klinsman, Holly Lindner, Derek Wire, and Matt Cabista. President Rayo welcomed everyone in attendance and introduced the board and staff members. The ground rules of the meeting were reviewed. A motion to elect Dennis Rayo as Chairperson of the Annual Meeting was made by Crystal Nerven. Holly Lindner seconded the motion, and it carried on voiceful. Chairperson Rayo appointed District Secretary Eva Frobe as Clerk of the Meeting, and Bob Meyer as Parliamentarian. Public comments. Chairperson Rayo opened the floor to public comments at this time. There were none. The minutes of last year's Annual Meeting were presented in print form to all attendees. A motion to approve the minutes with one revision in line two of the minutes, it read, "President Odine welcomed everyone in attendance." This should be changed to, "President Rayo welcomed everyone in attendance", was made by Bob Meyer and seconded by Tom Odine. The motion carried on voiceful. Chairperson Rayo reviewed the board member salaries. Board salaries currently are as listed. President, 149.35 per regular monthly meeting. Vice President, $140.77 per regular monthly meeting. Clerk, $153.65. Treasurer, 149.35. And Directors, 132.18 per regular monthly meeting. Committee and special meetings are paid as follows. Zero three and a half hours, $35. Three and a half to seven hours, $50. And meetings over seven hours, $65. Bob Meyer made a motion to leave board's members' salaries and committee/special meeting pay the same, but wanted to poll the members on how they felt about the pay. Kim Brummer seconded the motion. Chairperson Rayo polled each individual member on how they felt about the pay, and each member stated that they were satisfied with the rate of pay. Chairperson Rayo put the motion to a vote and carried on voiceful. Chairperson Rayo handed over the meeting to Administrator Crystal Nerven to conduct the budget hearing. He reviewed the 2024-25 proposed budget as presented. He opened the floor to questions from the audience. Bob Meyer had a question regarding federal revenues over the past three years. He proposed an overall budget of for all funds, with a proposed tax levy of $2,238,691. Oh, let's try this again. with a mill rate of 7.4%. Adoption of the tax levy. A paper advisory ballot vote to approve the proposed levy of $2,238,691 was taken. The results were 20 yes and 0 no votes. The levy was approved. The date for the 2025 Annual Meeting was set for Monday, October 20th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the High School Chillicothe. Chairperson Rayo opened the floor to public comments. And any other business as per Wisconsin statutes, there were none. A motion to adjourn the meeting was made by Kirk Castle. The motion was seconded by Dave Klinsman. The motion carried on voiceful. President Rayo declared the meeting adjourned at 8:05 PM.
Thank you, Eva. Now, I'll move to set the salaries of the board members. Is there any discussion? Sorry. Need a motion to approve those minutes as presented? Motion made by Bob, seconded by Matt. All those favor. Motion carries. Now, I'll move to set the salary of board members.
Just to clarify, I know this question may yield wondering what grade would support the person in the A-17, 50 anyway. Just for information.
David makes a motion to leave the numbers the same. Seconded by Crystal. All those favor. Opposed? Motion carries. Financial report.
Good evening. Thank you very much for coming to our annual, the 2025 Annual Meeting. We'll go through our general funds, our accounts. And we'll talk a little bit on our tax revenue limit. And we kind of, I kind of wrote that down to make it a little more easier for you to see what is all entailed in that and what is pertinent with us here at Lloyd. So first of all, we're going to talk a little bit about our general fund. Our general fund is where the majority of our revenue and expenditures are. The 2024-25 audit came back where we were $25,525 in the rep. All right? So you can see our beginning balance for our budget for the 2025-26 school year. Revenues and other financing sources. We'll just kind of go through here and give you what these all mean. There's nothing for transfers. Local sources are loyal property taxes, mobile home taxes, sports admissions. So we do not have a fee for students. Trying to think of a word for it. Consumer, consumer product fee. We do not have that this school year. And some drivers said behind the bill that this is where your local source, 200 local sources are coming from. So if you see a decrease in there, there is, we had consumer product fee in the past that ranged, what did you say, to $10,000 about? So you do not see that there anymore. Source 300, 400 inter-district payments. We're talking about open enrollment in. For many years, we've been chasing open enrollment, comparing in and out. And a couple of years ago, we were plus one. And it's grown the other way again. And we are sitting at 64 open enrollment in. And we'll talk about open enrollment shortly. Shared staff. So we share IT. We share our tech person, tech director, our OT therapist. We share, we share librarian with other districts. We share a counselor with another district. So we do get into sharing staff members to try to make it as efficient as possible for both districts involved. And they're not, they're with Greenwood, Owen, and Grant, not the districts that we share these staff numbers with. Intermediate sources, source 500. These are Carl Perkins, which is our Your Technical Education CTE, School of Work, and our Medicare. State sources, source 600. Sage, Library, Transportation Aid, Sparsity Aid, Per-Pupil Aid, Equalization Aid, and CTE grant. You will find all in our, in our state aid there, state sources. Federal sources, REIT, Title I, II, and IV. Now, you can see a major decrease with that. Esser money, kind of what has won away. So that's where you see that gigantic drop. All other sources, equipment sales, source of 800 and 900. Miscellaneous income. You can see where we're at with that. Total revenues, $9,565,762. We'll go to expenditures. I did instruction. Elementary, middle school, high school, instructional. Coaching. So there's where you're, a lot of our teaching staff, that's where you see that. Support services. Building and site maintenance. Administration Board. Busing, transportation bill is all in that support services. Non-pocket programming transactions. We have our open enrollment out. And we are sitting at 85 in our, the open enrollment out of our district. So that has grown compared to where we were a couple of years ago. That is something that we, as administration, are working on, trying to break that number back. Also on here, you'll see insurance, co-op sports, special ed transfer. We'll talk a little bit more about that voucher program. We'll talk a little bit more about that soon also. All right? And you can see the total expenditures and other finances at $9,805,528. So you do, we are proposing a negative $250,000 right now. We will work on getting that down to zero throughout the year. So if we haven't done, we've done that in the last couple of years where it might have been something like that in the beginning. And we've worked on this pension payment levels. So, and I'll tell you a reason why some of this is, you see our expenditures growing. Special projects fund, our Fund 27, which is, which is our special ed fund. All right? So you can see beginning and ending. So every year, when we are down at the year, our special ed fund has to zero as you've seen beginning and ending fund. All right? So with that, every year, we need to transfer money from Fund 10, General Fund, to cover our costs on special ed. Okay? This last year, for the 2024-25 school year, our transfer was $596,520. All right? So the year before that, I believe, was $350,000 to $400,000. So it is, it is growing. And then we talk about, we're at $250,000. We have a number of students that have, whether they have moved into our district to open enrollment into our district. Many of them have IEPs, Individual Educational Plans, that cost for pay, sub nine, full-time. And those, our staff has grown in our special ed program quite a bit this year. So you will see, we're looking at a projection of possibly $700,000 to $750,000 transfer fund out of that, to that fund, out of General Fund. So that is where, where we stand. With that, Long-Term Capital Investment Fund 46. Any capital projects with that? A lot of that, or some of that was used to finish up the concession stand and to work with the concession stand on that, which the concession stand is finished, completed, and I believe is working wonderfully. I know they use it in a couple of football games, and I know in youth sports, youth football, they use it a couple of times. And I know, what else? JV football, no school football. All right? So I'd like to thank everyone that helped donate to that. It was a great, great venture. Okay? Fund 50, food service. So we had a freezer go out at the end of last year. So we had to replace that walk-in freezer was just under $50,000. So you can see it in the red heading balance at $47,000. We also had some stainless steel projects there. That was $13,000 to help protect the walls by the Washington. And outside, where the students dumped their garbage and things like that to keep it clean. So they had something else that just wasn't working, so we put stainless there. What, what we are waiting on is a back pay of claimed lunches for the last two years, which would be $30,000. And that would help us out immensely for that. So if nothing else, we would have to zero that out most. Okay? Fund 80, our Community Service Fund. In summer rec, our new childcare, before and after school program is all out of here. Golf, the golf course is by here also. So we do, we did put a number of money in there. We're looking at, we're getting at $100,000 in there to make sure we cover any childcare costs that are above. Right now, they pay for it. It's not going to be below because we need a few more kids or more kids. So we put enough in there to cover that. Our greens on our golf course are getting new sand put on there. And they, I would say, were overgrown and are almost dying. And we are working on trying to get those back into shape. So we are working on that. We did some softball field maintenance in the softball diamond with a partnership with the city. So some of that money works with that because the softball field is a city park. It is used for summer rec. It is used for community purposes also. Okay? Okay, so we go with all funds. You can see where expenditures, where we are at. Like I said before, the role of our special ed program. I think there's a reason for this. I think we have a group special ed program. I think that may attract some, some people around as open enrollments. So as we added to that staff, that has cost us some money because of the pair of professionals that are needed. And we talked a little bit about where that was and where that might be for that transfer fund. And then you can see at the bottom, proposed property tax levy of Remember, that's 100,000 from community or Fund 80 is added on to that already. So you can see once where it is compared to what was on it in last year. And a big thing is our property values have gone up in, throughout our district. So that affects on the group, our district property taxes. So. Now, what we'll do is we will go onto our revenue limit worksheet. Now, you used to see something like possibly this. We put this up here. All righty? So what I did was I go get down and grab the main ingredients out of this. So our revenue is based out of enrollment, our property value, and our per pupil state aid. So we'll kind of talk about that basically in the order that I just said. So our, our membership count is a three-year rolling average. So if you hit a 20-student decline in one year, it doesn't, it's not off balance in that one year. All right? So you can see where our, our enrollment membership is at 2023, 485, 2024, 46, 2025, 483. So I'm just going to back up here a little bit. Okay, so go off of September as the count that I'm looking at. 474, 471, 469. All right? As we look at it, obviously, we can see we are slowly declining. Okay? Now, off of that, you can see summer FTE. 23, you have 11. 2024, you have 15. And 2025 is 14. All righty? So what that is, is that's our summer schooling. Okay? You know, we know we have four days of summer school in August. And then we have everything from our middle, our elementary, summer school, swimming lessons, basically anything we do in the summer. We try to come as a summer school and orbit towards our FTE. So with 14 FTEs out of that, that is approximately $165,000 that we earn through summer school. All righty? And that's, that's, that's a large amount. And there's a good paradigm of it through those first four days because you have basically elementary, I do believe we had one, maybe two students gone for those four days, three days in elementary. Middle school, I think there was four or five. High school was a little different. We had maybe more than 15 or 20. But the majority were here. And that is just something that we are hoping to continue because we do get a very good kickback for summer school on that. And what it is, is basically a jumpstart. We review for those four days in middle school and high school. And we come back first part of September, and they are ready to go. So in orientation, they get all of the other stuff ready to go. Teachers on the first day were already working on reviewing from, from last year and getting kids ready. So it's an important part. So that's where you get your total FTEs. And you can see we're down three. So your three-year rolling average is 485. Declining enrollment is three. We have eight per student of $11,744.50. That's what we get per student. Okay? With that, with declining enrollment, we get an exemption for three students. That is $35,000, a little over 3500, or $35,000. So. Any questions on that aspect of that student enrollment? That's one part. All right? Our fall 2025 property values went up to $397,550,412. Increase of 19.34%. That is just, that's land value is increasing. So 25, and we already talked about this, 25, 26 max, eight per student is $11,744.50. Our membership is 485. So our total per pupil aid is $5,696,83. You add our referendum for $1.4 million. And your declining enrollment exemption, $35,000. We do have one area where we had membership wired on open enrollment. We had an accountant kid, or student, I should say. So we got $7,060. And we have a private school voucher deduction. All righty? At $156,365. All right? So what that is, that school voucher is students that live in our district and say, go to Columbus Catholic. They are part of the voucher program. That is, and I, I think there's, I can't just say Columbus. I just know we have some kids that go to the students, they go to Columbus. That's where that comes from. All right? So we pay for them to go to the private school. So that's where we have it. Last year was $125,000. Now, so, okay, so that has an uptake. So there's your land. So our 2025 total revenue limit is $7,294,742. Our aid is $4 million. They can offer everything we got. $942,909. That is where we've been in the last 15 years, approximately 68% state aid. All right? We've been from 64 to 72, 73 in the last number of years. So we have, we have stayed in that, in that ballpark. Asking for a tax levy of $2,351,833. You add $100,000 for Fund 80. Our total tax levy for the 2025-26 school year is $2,451,833. With, that would make our million- Uh, with, that would make our mill rate at a six point one seven mils. Alright, membership. So you can see where our, our membership has, has dropped in the last six years. Fifty-two, fifty-two or so students. Right now, we have probably two of our, they are two of our biggest classes, our, our seniors and our juniors, um, forty-four and forty-three, I believe they are, alright? And in the rest of the district, we have one class that is at fourth. Everyone else is below that, like you're talking thirty-five, when you get down under fifth grade, now you're talking high twenties and maybe low thirties. So, if things don't change, and we have the same number of kids, so we have those forty-some going up, right now, we have like four K is at twenty-five, kindergarten is at twenty-four, or vice versa, but they're in the mid twenties, if that's the case, uh, twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight approximately, our membership will be down to four hundred and forty, alrighty? Uh, and then we'll be a loss of about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars of revenue. So just stating that this is where enrollment is going. So, um, we did, what are, what are we trying to do to combat that? Uh, you know, we talked about getting kids into our building earlier, uh, we did work on that three-kid program, we're working on after-school, before-school program, um, which is going to cost us money up on, uh, because it's not, it won't, um, pay for itself. Uh, but our whole idea is get our kid, get those kids in our building, um, so every year, four K through, and we get, we reap the benefits because they're in our building. Um, and that's just in talking with superiors over the last five or six years, that is, if you can get kids in your building earlier, the better, alright? Because they have a tendency to stay because of, of convenience and, and their use to it, so that is one thing, and, and then in other cases that we have a need for childcare in our, our community, so. We had our strategic plan, and that was a, um, something that we heard, that we need to try to develop some type of a childcare, so this is where we're starting, and then, and it all depends on how much room we have, um, and we'll see once from there where we go from here. Next one. Valuation tax levy comparison, tax levy breakdown from the city and townships that are in our district. See once where we're at, city and, and the other townships here, our school district. That just valuation tax levy comparison in the last few years. So with that, do we have any questions? Okay, just remind you that email me, call me, visit, if you ever have any questions, come and visit, call, alrighty? Thank you very much.
Alright, we will move for the adoption of tax levy, that will be a valid vote. Motion made to adopt? Should have, uh, second by Dan, motion made by, uh, second by Dan, all those in favor?
Get it out.
That's the ballot. Okay, while they are tallying up the results, we'll go ahead and set the next meeting date. I'm gonna propose Monday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-six, at seven o'clock.
And I think so, it's a good idea. How many come up yet?
Motion on second amendment, all those in favor? Motion carries, the meeting date is set. The tax levy vote was nineteen yes and zero no. Motion carries. Uh, any public comments? Hearing none, seeing none, I will, I will look for a motion to adjourn. I'm having some motion. Second by Kirk, all those in favor? Motion passes, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.
We'll take a couple of minutes, right, and we'll go ahead right into our first report meetings, monthly support meetings. And move that right here. Oh, sure, oh, that's right. So the RPA gets the. Oh, the people outside the, and the outside parties. Yeah, I know this. Good lord, pulling a string. See it, thank you Bob.
Thanks Bob, good.
I didn't want to get petty about it, so I didn't want to.
I made notes on it.
He starts doing that. Couple of years later.
I'll be right back.
I like drip asses. She's here.
Looking at the joint board meetings today, get paid out, or screen report signs for that, that's what's the bottom. So you're not, you have those a hundred, some odd dollars.
Whatever we get someone times. It was actually longer than last year's.
Cause I read it, cause I, cause I read it, that's why. Yes.
Otherwise, otherwise we were looking at. I feel like there'd be pretty many, none would have to be here half hour.
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular scheduled school meeting to order.
Good evening, I'm going to call the regular monthly school board meeting to order, roll call please. Here.
Here.
Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, I look for a motion to approve the agenda. Chris, make some motion. Second, second by Kirk, all those in favor? Motion carries, please stamp the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, and the United States of America, to the three hundred and forty seconds, one nation, and God, universal, liberty, and justice, for all. Uh, any public comment?
I have one. Uh, Tim Proby talked to me, uh, was just wondering if there is any action or any talking, uh, with Granton, uh, future, uh, growth with them or, or needs with them or anything like that, so, um, all's I'd say is, there has been some talk, uh, of at least working together in some different areas, so, um, he wanted to ask that, and, um, well, that's where we're standing right now, but.
Any other public comment? Say none, move to consent agenda items. As similar to months prior, I would look to approve the minutes of the September board meeting, the minutes of the October seventh building grounds committee meeting, and the minutes of the finance committee meeting held on October thirteenth, all in one motion. Very thorough, mandatory groundship. Okay, so we will table building grounds, and I would look for a motion to approve the minutes of the September board meeting and the finance committee meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Kirk makes a motion. Second by Matt, all those in favor? Motion carries. Financial reports?
All these are balances of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and the general fund balance is one million five hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and forty, forty-five cents. Capital projects, thirty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy, thirty-eight cents. And checking is five hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents.
Any questions on the financial reports as presented? Entertained a motion to approve? I'll make that motion. Kirk makes a motion. Second by Nick, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. New business, four point one, review and approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
So our, from our finance meeting and then from the annual meeting, then we just have, um, I'm going to propose that we accept, approve the budget as is, um, with, with right now two hundred, oh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall, that I believe we can get closer to zero, we know, by the end of the year.
And to make up that two hundred and fifty, just give us examples of, of things you will look to do to make the show.
So the object is what we're with the elementary parking lot, um, that I'm working with, uh, HSR on, maybe making that into a, maybe two or three year, what I know budget, you know, so maybe take a little bit off of that, uh, and just in, in some, uh, spending, and the, the key's going to be is where special ed transfer is going to be, um, and what we can do there, so, um, and like I said before, tightening the belts where we are not allowing as much stuff to plan as, you know, spending, I know they have budgets, but if, if it's needed, then yes, but if, if we can get away with what we have now, spending, I know they have budgets, but if it's needed, then yes, but if we can get away with what we have now, that, those things will go decently, so.
Can you talk a little bit about the nine thousand dollar grant we got from CISA ten that they put here on the day?
I can, uh, so, CISA ten has a grant that they put out, or applied for, uh, for child care programs, uh, and we were selected through CISA ten to receive nine thousand dollars to go to wages for our child, childcare program, three K program, little pups, little dogs, so that, that will help in that aspect.
Anybody up here have any questions on the, the budget that was presented?
Mr. Leonard, I just have a question about the, um, negative lunch account balance. Did you say in the other meeting that we're like thirty thousand dollars in the whole, or I missed that?
Right now it's forty seven. We do have approximately thirty thousand in back uncredited lunch that we are waiting for, from the last few years, so, not, not, not so much from families at all, it is just, we get so much aid for, um, your free reduce, so, there's some back.
Okay.
Maybe that needs to be done.
Okay, I was just curious if it was families or?
No, no, so, I believe Julie and I worked on this a lot, we're down to a handful that we're talking about, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding budget? If there's none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty six budget.
Kirk makes that motion. Looking for a second. Second by Tom. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Four point two, accept the twenty twenty five, twenty six tax levy.
I'm going to recommend, um, as far as our annually, our community recommended or approved, uh, the total twenty five, twenty six tax levy of two million, four hundred and fifty one thousand, eight hundred and thirty three dollars.
Matt makes a motion to approve the tax levy. Looking for a second. Second. Second by Kirk. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I believe we're going to scratch four point three.
Yes, we only have an applicant, we had an applicant, and it was supposed to be an interview Friday, and it didn't happen, so, so there's nothing present for that, which was to hear a radio special, I think, or, there's some other things in the work in that. Mrs. Driggs and I will be chatting about it.
Okay, let's move to four four. Update on the strategic plan.
All right, uh, this will probably be my last time of reporting for the strategic plan because the committee met, uh, in early October, uh, and we are working on them from here on out, they will report back to the board monthly on what, what we're doing as a committee. Uh, we kind of just put our ducks in a row, uh, in early October, October, and, um, to what to go, how do we want to make sure, we want to make sure that our communication transparency is, is thorough throughout staff, students, families, and community stakeholders, so, we are throwing together, not throwing together, we are creating a survey, uh, for those people, um, and next meeting we'll meet and, and look at getting that out to, to the public. And that'll kind of talk about communication, good, bad, or other, you know, do we need to approve or react with some of this stuff, so, transparency, anything else that you guys can think of? So we're just getting, making sure that we're getting everything in the strategic plan, you know, monthly, so.
All right, four point five, update the discussion on joint board meeting with Greenwood that was held on October fifteenth.
A couple of things I have, uh, so, received another, um, wanting for an application today, that I believe puts us at eleven or twelve, um, we have another tour tomorrow, or Wednesday, I should say, sorry, that I do believe will make the fifth tour, um, so, applications, proposals are due October thirty first, uh, interview committee will meet in Loyal on November third at seven PM. The district conference room to go through their proposals, uh, then when we set up interviews for that, for that week. Uh, we also have a branding committee meeting in Greenwood, Capitol Imperial on Monday, November third at seven PM. I don't know if anyone else has anything else for that.
I just, just to recap a little bit of what we did in Greenwood last week, we did tour the school, we, we did, uh, facilities tours, and what we did in Loyal a month prior, um, and we did have a discussion with the Greenwood board about live streaming and archiving of, of joint board meetings. And it will be on the joint board meeting agenda for November, which is scheduled for November twelfth. Um, in the meantime, if you think of any other agenda topics, uh, getting to us early, keep reminding us, and I do apologize, I, uh, I forgot about our conversation and getting the live sharing on this agenda, and by the time we remembered, we would have to amended the agenda and, uh, we felt that we shouldn't do that, so, I'll, I'll take the point for that. Anything else to discuss in the joint board meeting? All right, we'll move forward, four point six, discuss all ATR report.
All right, ATR, uh, for twenty twenty five, twenty six, uh, ATR stands for the Achievement Gap Reduction Program for grades K through three. Uh, it's a program designed to reduce achievement gap between low income students and students in the same grade and subject statewide. Participating, participating schools must create performance objectives in the areas of reading and math for each grade level. These objectives must be met by implementing one of three strategy, strategies, or a combination of these. Uh, one, one to one tutoring provided by a licensed teacher, uh, two, instructional coaching for teachers provided by a licensed teacher, three, maintaining eighteen to one or a thirty to two classroom ratios, and providing professional development on small group instruction. All strategies are currently being implemented in the school district of Loyal. ATR program requires the school board review of implementation progress through the year. Uh, the twenty twenty five, twenty six ATR objectives were obtained through the AIMS Web Plus and Fast Bridge assessments, even at the end of the twenty four, twenty five school year, and our review at the middle and end of the, of the year. So just real quickly, uh, recapping, our kindergarten reading, uh, for twenty five, twenty six school year, fifty seven percent of students were above eighty percent on the initial Sums benchmark in AIMS Web Plus. Uh, kindergarten math, uh, same twenty five, twenty six school year, fall twenty five scores, twenty twenty five scores indicate sixty four percent students meet default benchmark. First grade reading, um, twenty five, twenty six school year, sixty one percent of students met early reading benchmark for the spring of twenty five. Uh, first grade math, hundred percent of students met, spent, uh, spring benchmark on early math composite scores. Second grade, uh, thirty eight percent met early reading benchmark for the spring of twenty five, twenty five, uh, twenty twenty five. Fifty five percent of students met the CBO reading benchmark for the spring of twenty twenty five. Secondary math, eighty six percent of the students met spring benchmark on early math composite. Uh, lastly, third grade, thirty five percent of the students met, um, spring benchmark for the reading English composite scores, uh, for the spring of twenty five, and fifty percent of students met spring benchmark on CBO reading benchmark for the spring of twenty five. Lastly, third grade math, seventy five percent of students met spring benchmark on the math composite scores, so, that kind of gives you an idea of where, where our kindergarten through third are, um, and they will work on improving those scores throughout the year, we will have a mid-year, and then we will also have a end of the year report.
Anything else on that?
Any questions? We're good.
Four point seven, discuss the possible action on MOU with the Children's Council and Mental Health Services.
So we have Mrs. Driggs here, our special ed director, uh, who is working with Katie Brand and Mike McSorley, um, on this service, and, uh, I, I think it's a very good deal, and so, uh, Mrs. Driggs is going to talk a little bit about more defining of what it is, so, what they're looking for is a place to house their therapists.
Um, yeah, so us three and then Mr. Leonard as well met last week with Children's Wisconsin, um, and so they have hired a mental health therapist that would be school-based service for us, so it is free of cost to the district, they would come in, we have to help them refine a placement two days a week, um, and normally they have room in our mature office, um, but we just have to provide space for them. This is a long-term therapy that can be provided by a school counselor, so it's just something for our students, it's another resource we can use uh, for our families. Um, Greenwood has the same, um, service, they go through Children's, Child, Children's Wisconsin as well. Um, so they take up fourteen spots, and unless they're full, they're full, but the referral process is similar to if they were to be referred to an agency outside of the district, and, uh, Miami store, their school counselor would handle those referrals, but there's an MOU in place that just protects the district as well, if there were to be any, um, risk to self or risk to others, they would collaborate with us as a team, so, uh, although they're an outside agency, there are school-based services that they would collaborate with, so. I think it's something that's important for our students, um, for the wellbeing of our students, it's something that we can provide to families that they don't want to get over the west side of the school. Any questions?
It does not cost, as I don't know if you said that, it does not cost the district anything. And it is very nice because the therapist here, working with our students, and then can work with our staff, um, how they can work together to help the student involved. We need to supply an area, and I believe we can definitely do that. So that is what you're moving, is the area, uh, office space available for them two days a week.
If there's no further questions, I'd prefer a motion to approve. Um, here, now we have spaces, go, and it's down official to it, kids, I would give a motion to approve the space for the mental health service. Kirk makes a motion. Second by Tom. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Other business, principals report.
Yes, we started the month of October off with homecoming week, so that was pretty exciting, so, I would like to thank Mrs. Zerkey and student council for putting together a fun-filled activity on Friday, um, they did go as well as we hoped, but the kids had a great time, and then we had a homecoming dance on Saturday night that was had been attended as well. Um, we also had during that week, the Dick Pink event, the volleyball host, and we were able to raise money, uh, along with Colby that was here and was a main guest. Um, in the elementary, we had two out of the three coaching sessions from our CKLA Amplify, which is our ELA, our English um, new curriculum that we have, um, so far we've heard lots of great things, that our staff is doing a great job for implementing it the second year, we're right on target where we're supposed to be, and our teachers have worked really, really hard in making sure that everything is going well, so she was very impressed, um, as to where we are regarding that.
Also, in the elementary, we had our PBIS Golden Ticket drawing, uh, so our students earn, uh, these dog tags for being safe, respectful, responsible, uh, and a learner in our specials, so congratulations to September's Golden Ticket winners, Wyatt Paul, Lily Menega, Cash McCarlin, Aloe Waldhauser, Wesley Frederick, and Brynlee Kolmansberger, and I promise you that was not right. Um, at the middle school and high school, um, we have quite a few celebrations here, last Wednesday, I took a group to Colby uh, for the Cloverbelt Student Athlete Leadership Conference, where they were able to hear motivational speaker and author Craig Hillier. Um, it was a great event, and the group that we brought had a lot of fun, uh, very nice to see, uh, with other student athletes in the conference as well, um, and again, a very cool event. Uh, for middle school and high school, uh, we also had PBIS awards, uh, so those awards that we were, uh, having for both middle school and high school are a loyal, proud student, and then also students who had best effort and who are most improved. Uh, so these students were nominated by staff and then also voted on, uh, by staff, and these are the students who received the award for September. So our middle school student, uh, that demonstrated loyal, proud, went to Lily Hoffy, she's a sixth grader. Uh, our middle school best effort and most approved, improved award went to Michael Granch, who's an eighth grader. Our high school loyal, proud student, uh, was Casey Bauer, she is a senior. Our high school best effort, most improved award went to Camden Miller, he's a sophomore. And then our high school student month was Allison Dix, um, she is a freshman. Uh, now talking about some of our athletics, so last weekend, uh, on Saturday, we had our conference cross-country meet, and I went with you, and just want to say congratulations, uh, not only to our entire cross-country team, uh, but the individual runners that earned all conference. So Landon Gentiman was second team all conference, and Andrew Langgood was honorable mention all conference. Um, our cross-country, uh, student athletes will be competing on Saturday in Duran, uh, at the WIA sectional event. Also, congratulations to our volleyball team and our all-conference athletes, Addie Wolf was first team all conference, Olivia Sandeliter was second team all conference, and Ken Lee, all men, earned an honorable mention all conference. Uh, also a very, very big deal, um, Addie Wolf was voted the conference player of the year, uh, for the Cloverbelt East, so a huge congratulations, uh, to Addie as one of us her teammates. Uh, tomorrow they will be in action for the WIA regional event, uh, against Thorpe, and that will be here starting at seven o'clock. Um, just a reminder that the WIA does set, uh, admission prices, which is six dollars for students and adults, and then one dollar for students or children that are six and under, um, for these types of games, no passes are accepted for entry. Um, and then congratulations to the LJ football team for earning their first ever playoff game, uh, they will be playing in Edgar this Friday at seven o'clock. Good luck.
Um, we had a field trip with Ms. McSorley and Mrs. Fittsle, they took fifteen students in the high school to UW-Excalibur for their Ed Rising.
to UW Stell for their Ed Rising, uh, field trip. So this is where students go to college, UW Stell, and participate in some academic educational activities, see what it takes to be a teacher and kind of expose, get kids aware of what is out there. Um, and hopefully they become teachers and hopefully come back here to Lowell. So the field trip was highly attaining and the kids had a lot of fun. And I hope that it, hope it opened their eyes to what the world of education can be. And a lot of these kids already are a brain health mentor. So they're already working with kids in the elementary and, um, being a TA for some of the teachers in the elementary as well. Um, just a couple of reminders for the next couple of days. We have parent teacher conferences here tomorrow night and Thursday night from 3:30 to 7:30. Uh, so we're hoping we get a lot of parents and families in to see their teachers and to talk. Also on Wednesday morning at eight o'clock, 8:05 actually, we have our academic awards from 2024-25 trimester three at eight in the morning. So parents receive a letter. We're hoping to see you there on Wednesday morning. And there's no school for students on Thursday and Friday as we have a teacher in service and then a day off. So. Last thing to note, book fair is coming November 3rd to the 7th. Be ready.
Any questions on the principal report? Don't get a little ready to the superintendent's report.
I would like to congratulate, uh, the Lenac play, uh, I guess, which has advanced from the district to the regionals on November 4th or 5th. Don't know for sure when that is. Uh, so congratulations to them. Excuse me. Uh, also good luck to the cross-country volleyball and football programs in their tournament play coming up tomorrow and this week. Uh, we've got some great news where we have, uh, Mrs. Jessica Zarki will be presenting at the 2026 Wisconsin State Education Convention on Financial Literacy. She will be, her and myself will be there and we will figure out who else to leave, who will go. Um, it will be Friday morning. Um, so she will be talking about personal finance, financial literacy and Wisconsin Act 60. So congratulations to her. It'll be exciting to represent our district. Um, I believe we are a forefront leader in financial literacy with this program. Uh, can't thank Draper Hill combination enough on this and Mr. Draper Hill himself. But it has definitely been amazing on what Mrs. Zarki has done and what this program has done for our students. Uh, we also talked about short-term borrowing. After the last few days, it looks like that, uh, we may not have to short-term borrow. So so things have kind of come in, uh, kind of unexpectedly, would you say, Julie? Uh, and we think we can get through it in, into December. So but it looks, looks positive, correct? Okay, so more good news. Uh, lastly, uh, we have a guest speaker, Carl, Superintendent White Bagley will be in our high school gym at two o'clock talking to, uh, our staff and our students fifth through 12. Any parents and community members that want to come in, they are more than welcome. Uh, what he's going to be talking about is the future of learning and education, um, globally. So, so I, um, uh, watched him, listened to him, seen him. At Cornell, he did one. Uh, and it was, it was eye-opening to understand that, uh, our students aren't going to be just against students from Marshall, Spencer, uh, the other states. It is a global network, a global competition out there when they get out. So it was really eye-opening and I think it'll be very good for our, our students, staff, and parents to, to see. So that is what I have. So thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and set some meeting dates.
Uh, I would go regular board meeting next month. Right now the 24th is the day before Thanksgiving. So I would
26.
You're away from that.
26.
26.
Is the day before Thanksgiving.
Right. What did I say, 24?
That Monday would be an option.
Monday would be an option on the 19th.
I think we should go on the 19th. November 19th. Then we'll have a joint meeting on the 12th. That will be here, correct? Uh, we need to schedule an athletic committee meeting. Would we, how about that 17th or 18th after school?
Matt, Crystal, 17th to 18th? 17th, 17th, uh?
Six o'clock?
Six.
Earlier or what? Six o'clock?
Six will be nine, okay. Do we want Billy to go on?
I'm gonna get a little brand, a little brands.
Okay. Okay, I've been working on trying to get a little sign, uh, brand sentences. So sets up when he can make it.
Did you guys want to set a policy meeting?
We have one. We have one on 27th or 9:00 AM.
And finance, we just had a bit there. I'm missing anything else? Policy on 27th?
Yeah, 9:00 AM. That is an update from Neola.
We got it.
We're good.
Any questions or clarifications with the agenda items? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the open session, but we are going to convene a closed session. Crystal made a motion. Second by David.
All those a favor?
It's up, sorry. We're better to roll call.
Yep.
Here?
Yep.
Andy?
Yep.
Crystal?
Yep.
Kirk?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yes.